Okay, welcome to the... We'll be back. Shut the mains a little bit. Alright, can y'all hear me? Okay. Now, we're gonna have... Do things a little different. We're gonna initiate a new tradition. It's gonna be called, uh, The Gavel Gang. So, we're gonna allow anybody that has any children, uh, just email the city. Email Marie Gear. No, Susan Hyatt would be good. At the city. If you want your child to be able to smash the gavel down to the gang of our meetings and get a picture taken with the mayor and council, please sign them up. So, the first... And all of my children are gonna be so mad at me for this, but the first children in the gavel gang are gonna be Bates Madison's children. That's Miles and Heather?
Kathleen.
Kathleen? Miles and Kathleen?
KK.
So, Miles and Kathleen, if you'd like to come up, I'll let you bang one, and then she can bang one. You have to bang a hard two. Okay, there you go. Alright, this meeting is called to order. Thank you. Alright, Bates Madison, would you like to introduce someone for our invocation?
Yeah, I'd like to invite Reverend Don Harp to give the invocation of the Bible. He's the former senior minister at Peach Road United Methodist Church. My minister for many years before his retirement. He still teaches at Emory Catholic School of Theology and is a resident of the city of Brookhaven. So, Don?
O Lord, our Lord, how excellent is our name in all the earth! We gather tonight as a grateful people, grateful for the freedoms that we've been given, paid for by the lives and wounds of thousands upon thousands of young men and women. And we do not accept these freedoms lightly, but with deep gratitude. We're grateful for the chance to choose, to choose where we shall live, what we shall do, whom we shall vote for. And once again, we cherish these freedoms. And as our infant city gets upon its way, we pray your blessings upon all of us, particularly those who have been elected and those who work in the city. And we pray that we shall be generous to them in our affirmations, and that we shall express, perhaps if we disagree, with a great sense of humility and kindness. And bless our schools in this county, we pray, oh God, that we shall find new budding and new life with a new group of people and most determined leaders. Now, join us this evening, and bless us with your presence. We pray with your blessing and holy name. Amen.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Yes, Mayor Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase Williams, District 1, present.
Councilmember Jim Iyer, District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gavia, District 4.
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Um, open remarks. Um, just hold folks and many folks and stick around for after the council meeting ends at 7 o'clock so that we can, uh, you'll hear presentations on all options for schools in DeKalb County. And of course, Reverend State Michael Furman will be here first. And hope to have Representative Jacobs here and some former elected officials and some school board members will be here, as well as some other education advocates. So, please stick around for that. Uh, we're gonna have, um, agenda announcements next, but after that's public comment, as always, please remember, uh, we need to maintain decorum here in Brookhaven. And if you wanna make sure you have a comment, please make your, uh, opinions known. Or just be, uh, make sure we follow rules of the court. Thank you. Agenda announcements. Oh, flag, yes, I'm sorry. Wait. Y'all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and freedom of speech.
Okay, um, agenda announcements. We have some motions from the floor we need. Uh, sure, Rebecca Williams, Councilmember, if you want.
I just wanted to thank the, uh, the good folks at the PATH Academy, uh, for allowing us to come here tonight. Um, yeah, it's actually, uh, just a great charter school that we have here. Kids really come from all over the county, and it's, uh, they have a great success record. Uh, and just so that you understand, PATH stands for Perseverance, Accomplishment, Triumph, and Honor. So, that's what PATH is all about. I thought we should share that with you. Thank you.
I have another announcement as well. Thank you to PATH as well. Um, we have in Brookhaven a brand-new community development director who's gonna be managing and leading our community development department. She comes to us from, uh, Johns Creek and Ro- long experience in Johns Creek and Roswell and other jurisdictions where she is an expert in planning and zoning and things of that nature. Her name is Susan Cannon. Susan, if you please, stand. And I think I need to swear her in doing that. I think. Susan, if you please. You wanna come up on the stage?
Yes, I'm too tall.
Everybody get ready. Our oath of office is extremely long and uncharacteristically so, so y'all bear with us as we do this. And Susan, if I go too fast, just kick me. Thank you. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Susan Cannon.
Do you solemnly swear our firm?
Do I solemnly swear the bond?
That I will faithfully execute the office?
That I will faithfully execute the office?
As community development director of the city of Brookhaven.
I will keep it out of my offices.
And will, to the best of my ability?
And will, to the best of my ability?
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of Georgia?
Constitution of Georgia.
And Charter?
And Charter.
Ordinances and regulations?
And this is my pledge.
Of the city of Brookhaven.
I see.
I'm not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state?
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust?
I am not holding any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States?
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state?
Any other state.
Or any foreign state?
Or any foreign state.
Which I, by the laws of the state of Georgia?
Which are by the laws of state of Georgia.
Am prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office?
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia?
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
I will perform the duties of my office?
I will perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the city of Brookhaven?
In the best interest of the city of Brookhaven.
To the best of my ability without fear?
To the best of my ability without fear.
Favor?
Favor.
Affection?
Affection.
Reward?
Reward.
Or expectation thereof?
Or expectation thereof.
Congratulations. Thank you, Susan, very much. I just wanted the ladies in the audience to know that women are running Brookhaven. Everybody that I've appointed for the week prior has been a female. Okay. Yes?
That's good. One more announcement?
Sure.
Councilmember Gavia and I yesterday visited with the Latin American Association, uh, located up Beaufort Highway, and have driven by that building any number of times and did not realize what all goes on in there. They offer a number of services, uh, provide, uh, family and, uh, counseling and family services. There also, I, I found out that we have two consulates in the city of Brookhaven, that Honduras consulate and the Guatemala consulate are located within the LAA. But more importantly, they also offer Spanish lessons. If anybody wants to take Spanish classes in a, in a situation where you're, uh, they have English to Spanish and Spanish to English, and for want to understand every... So often, they bring the two classes together and let you interact with, with people sort of with full immersion. But if you want additional information, the website is DLAa.org. It's DLAa.org. Uh, and, uh, but I just wanted to, uh, uh, so mention that we do have a very high-quality wonderful resource located in the city of Brookhaven serving the, uh, Latino community in Atlanta. Thank you.
Can I segue into that for a second?
You're off skills, Jim.
Uh, to segue into that, um, as an announcement, the Hispanic Health Coalition is sponsoring a 5K walk on Beaufort Highway on Sunday, April 7th, just as a reminder. And it's to call attention to the health issues that impact, um, basically, the Hispanic community, but it's opened up to everybody. We'd like to make it inclusive. There will be a fair at the end of the parking lot, one of the walk, one of the shopping centers there, and then, um, the city will be participating with us to help with it. Present information and pass out health information related to this issue. Classics, again.
Okay, the, um, agenda announcements. Alright, we have some motions we need. We need on these, um, tableing some items, I think K4, L3 and 4, and Amendment 4 of moratorium. So, if anybody wants to dive into those right now.
I'll move that we, um, table consideration of the ordinance 2013-03, the issue 7, repealing Chapter 15, Article 13, titled "Multi-Family Rental Housing", and then, Chapter 18, "Nuisances", by adding Article 5, "Multi-Family Rental Housing" in the code of ordinances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
We just need time for this, right?
Right. All in favor of adopting the motion to table? Please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Alright, was it just 4 on L that we were taping that was the only one?
No, the, 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 the agreements.
Oh, yeah, the intergovernmental agreements.
I, two, four.
That's I?
Oh, I'm sorry, L3.
L3?
L3, L4, the table.
The audit committee, is that L? That's I, I'm sorry. That's K, I'm sorry. That's L, there we go. Alright, 3 and 4, um, we need a motion on 3.
I move we, uh, uh, table action item number L3, consideration of approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb and City of Brookhaven for solid management services.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, want a discussion?
Just to let the people know what, what the reason for the table.
We need more time.
The DeKalb, I'm sorry.
Yes, the DeKalb has not finished, uh, uh, working out the rest of the language that we agreed to and would like to come back from DeKalb.
Right.
One of those of you that weren't here, we discussed this during the work session just previously.
No substantive issues, just a little time to get...
Uh, it's, uh, it's actually procedural, how, how, I think, certain go and we agreed to it all just needs to be adopted.
Right.
Alright, all in favor of adopting the motion? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And clerk, please, in advance, that is passed. Alright, there's a motion on K4, I believe? Is there a motion on K4?
L4.
L4.
I move we table, uh, uh, action item L4, uh, consideration of approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb and City of Brookhaven for solid waste management services.
Second. Any discussion?
Again, for the same reasons, we're working out some technical details with the, with the language, and, uh, we need more time on it.
Alright, all in favor of tabling, um, L4? Signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? And clerk, please, in advance, that is tabled. Just to clarify, was K4 the one that Rebecca referred to?
That's the family rent, that's the family.
Right.
Yeah, multi-family.
Yeah, so K4, alright. Alright, and then we also, there's a motion, is there a motion for, um, moratorium on LCI bill?
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we, um, move to impose a moratorium on the building permits of LCI.
Okay.
This is a motion to add.
Okay, add.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we add an agenda item to this agenda to, uh, consider a moratorium on the LCI overlay new application permitting.
And that'd be moving into L3, correct? Under New Business?
Moving into L3 under New Business.
Okay, we're making it L3. Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of inserting, uh, moratorium on the New Business Agenda under L3? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And clerk, please, in advance, that we have agenda to amend the agenda to include that item. Okay. Now we have... Let all of the agenda members have a listen. Alright, now we have a public comment period. If you have, um, filled out a form in which to speak about any issue, please, um, Madam Clerk, you want to go, or is it clerk? Oh, those are empty? There are some at the front, and there's some up here. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call it? First citizen?
Okay, the first one is Hans von Chierski.
Hans von Chierski? At the school with his daughter. Um, please state your name and your address, please.
Hans von Chierski, 4173 Oak Forest Drive, at London George 319. My question is, how you are implementing the tax on utility? And which utility using? What are the rate and the cap?
Yeah, we can't answer questions. This is standard operating season for all cities. This is Robert's Rules of Order. It keeps us legal. We can't answer any questions, so this is the public comment section. We'll have an opportunity later to make comments on things that are brought up or in the public comment section, but we can't answer any questions from the audience. It's just a comment, is all, is all we're taking. But that will be addressed later.
Alright.
Thank you.
This always seems to be such a sense of disappointment for the crowd, but the policy is, it's comment time. Do you mind me, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
It's comment time. And by Robert's Rules of Order, we are not to respond. It bothers us too to believe this is leaping. So, we listen to your questions, but then later on during the night, we'll have an opportunity to respond, so just bear with us. Thank you, Mr. Robert.
Next citizen?
Okay, we have Marie Cole.
You're welcome to read mine.
I want to go, but...
I think you have to.
I think you have to do it.
Okay.
Just your name and address.
My name is Marie Cole, 4219 Ashwoodie Trail. My two questions, well, one question is, will any of the part-time employees being mayor and city council benefit from a insurance, health insurance program? And will the permanent employees have a pension plan or an opportunity to set up a 401K?
Say next.
I don't have any names up here for the main audience.
Any more, uh, forms? You just turn your form into the clerk over here if you want us to come up and speak. Alright, um, seeing no one else, we're gonna close the public comment section and move on to the rest of the agenda. Alright, uh, we have a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I'd actually like to point out that one of the things we're passing is the salary and benefit package. And, uh, if I could, uh, just respond, but in fact, uh, part-time employees are, are being offered the health insurance plan. Uh, I don't think anybody's, um, it hasn't been formed yet, so we don't know if anybody's gonna take that. But it is offered to all employees, and we, uh, will be offering a pension plan.
No, no.
I'm sorry, we'll be offering a 401K plan, which, uh, employees can contribute to, and we will, uh, match up to 5% of that.
Yeah, not a defined benefits plan.
The, uh, the details of this are online in the agenda packet. You'll, you can see the full details of, uh, uh, of all of this online. Um, when you go to the city, you can look under Meetings and look under the City Council. Uh, if you pull up Agenda Packet, the, uh, the full description of it all and the details are in there.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'd just like to point out that in the consent agenda, Councilmember Joe Gavia has been, um, appointed to the Brookhaven Chamber of Commerce Board. So, a little hand for Joe Gavia there. Who's your full, is it Joseph I. Gavia? What is your full name?
Joseph John.
Joseph J. Gavia.
That could be right.
Alright, um, any more comment? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda? Please signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? And clerk, please, in advance, the consent agenda has passed. Okay, we've got some announcements here. Uh, for, Brookhaven's gonna have a development authority. And we have, the benefit of living in Brookhaven, we have a huge talent base and some pretty highfalutin' folks living here. And, uh, folks that are much smarter than I and much, uh, more talented than I will be on our development authority. I'm very excited about that. And we have some great, uh, people to, who have stepped forward willing to serve on our development authority. And I'd like to recognize them. Uh, if I wanna call your name and give your short bio, if you'd please stand and remain standing. First, we have Walt Ammer. He is President and CEO of Waffle House. And if you look under his jacket, he's got his Waffle House sweater on. Usually, I see him, and he lives in my neighborhood, and I see him in his striped yellow and brown, white Waffle House gear. He'll, he'll get on the grill and cook sometimes in the one down on P Street. But, uh, he's, uh, joined Waffle House in 1992, and he was Vice President of Finance, and he was promoted in 2006 to be the, uh, CEO and President of Waffle Houses. And, um, uh, Walt is an extremely talented individual, highly respected, and we're, he's gonna be the Chair of our development authority. These are announcements of the appointments. The appointments will actually be ratified next on, on April 9th, but, uh, we appreciate you all. Please remain standing. We have Todd Lantier. Is Todd Lantier here tonight? There he is. Todd Lantier, in addition to being on the Brookhaven, uh, Chamber of Commerce, he's a sales manager and a consultant, and, um, he is a, the unique sales manager for Mass Mutual Financial, Capstone Financial Partners. And, uh, served as Director, previously, as Director of Investments at Mass Mutual Finance Group, Capstone Financial Partner, and Igor Life Insurance Company. Todd's another very talented individual and served on the Brookhaven Governor's Commission as well. So, thank you, Todd. We have Tim Payton. Is Tim here? Tim's an attorney, uh, and he is, uh, expert in state-level taxes in many different states, and that's gonna be a benefit for the development authority. So, Walt, make sure you utilize his, his skills. We have Susan Coker. Alright. Ms. Coker is Vice President and Treasurer of Cox Enterprises. Don't do that, Judge Stevenson's portal. We'll end up in the podium. She is the former Vice President and Treasurer for Cox Enterprises, and she's, um, um, which is, of course, head court here in Atlanta. Is that the brick, is their building in Brookhaven? It is, that's right.
My car.
Alright, which is great. And, um, and she's, uh, comes to us, uh, on the recommendation of Rebecca Williams, and we're glad to have you. Thank you, Ms. Coker. We have John Rhett. This is Mr. Rhett. I met him earlier. Is he here? There he is. Uh, he's an investment banker. Um, he was with SunTrust for many years. Is that correct?
Yeah.
35 years for SunTrust, and now just recently retired and doing some consulting, I believe?
So far, so good.
Alright. Um, he went to Georgia Tech, which is, I didn't realize until now, so we have to scratch his name off. There's so many tech people. And he, previous to SunTrust, had worked for Merrill Lynch and has a long experience in municipal trading and things of that nature. So, um, we're, we're happy to have Mr. Rhett. We have Pat Hoven. We have Pat Hoven. Pat is the CEO of Tron Calling, or Capital City Nisa, I'm sorry. And he was a previous employee of Tron Calling Motors, and he's long been active in our community, and we're very happy to have Pat Hoven serving on our development authority. And we have Luke Anderson. Is Luke here tonight? There he is, there's Luke Anderson. He's an attorney as well, and he has some experience in municipal tax and law, I believe, as well, but he's also a technology law. And he received the APR three-minute rating by Martindale-Hubble, which is the highest rating of legal ability and ethical standards. He lives in my neighborhood, lives down the street from me, and has been involved in his community, and highly respected individual, and I respect him and his intellect and his efforts, so thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, for serving, willing to serve on our development authority. And lastly, the development authority needs an attorney. They have a couple, but they need an attorney who'll actually do work for the authority and make sure they dot their i's and cross their t's. And we have Ms. Wendy Butler. If you please stand, Wendy. She will be the attorney for the development authority. She's spent 14 years as a land use and economic development attorney, real estate and government affairs. She started at Austin Bur, which is a big time firm, and she now has her own firm. She also has a master's in community planning, which is great for an attorney to have that who's doing land use work. She serves on the board as the chair on the committee on planning, and we're very happy to have Wendy's talents being utilized for our development authority. So if you'd all please give these folks a round of applause. Stellar group of people. Thank you very much for coming. Y'all, if you need to get home, your child's birthday, Walt, you can get home now, but thank you for coming. Or you can stay here for some of this fun. Also like to recognize our two municipal court judges, I believe are here. Judge Stevenson, Laura Stevenson is here. There she is. And I think Jonathan Grenade is here, I saw him as well. There he is. Those are two municipal board judges. The first day of court is April 19th, so make sure, I think Bates is selling tickets or something, so you might want to go attend.
God, get a ticket.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right. Where are we now? We're on reports and presentations. We have the reports and presentations. Okay. Next, we have K. One. Consideration approval of Resolution 2012-10-01, approval of fiscal year 2013 budget for the city of Brookhaven. You're not on, Mike's not on? Say test it.
I'm ready to go.
Very good. Chris Pike.
All right, our agenda tonight is the resolution to approve the first Brookhaven budget. It's been discussed and vetted and discussed more and more, and certainly would open it up to any questions, but the only thing I really want to point out is, this is a fluid document. Over the course of this year, you will encounter unanticipated issues, as well as some things that you do know are coming down the line. And we'll amend this budget from time to time throughout the year, and as you will with all budgets, but this will be the first. With that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Chris, could you explain, while in this budget, it does show that our maximum cap mileage rate of 3.35, but can you explain that that's, is that a permanent placeholder, a permanent rate? I think some people think that tonight we're going to vote on setting the taxes. Could you clarify that?
At this time, you're not setting your tax rates. That will happen once the digest is released from the tax assessor and tax commissioner's office, you'll see what the digest is, you'll evaluate what your financial needs are for the remainder of the year, look at the available resources and your available needs, and at that point, you'll set the mileage rate. The amount that's in here right now, for lack of a better word, is a placeholder. You don't know what your mileage rate's going to be. Typically, a lot of times what you'll do is, just whatever it was last year, you'll assume that unless given some other direction. Because we don't have a last year, we set the amount at what the charter stipulates is the maximum amount, and then at that point, you can decide and change it once you have the digest out.
Could you also clarify franchise fees? I think this is something new to a lot of people, and I think some people think the city is imposing franchise fees. Could you clarify where these come from and how much they are?
Franchise fees is an agreement between the city and the utility companies, in which the utility companies will assess a charge to the utility rate payers. It's usually a percentage of the overall bill or certain components of the bill. On a quarterly, monthly, or annual basis, the utility companies will then pay those monies over to the city.
And as I understand it, the main one is the Georgia power.
That is correct.
And that's, some of that we've already been paying, is that correct?
Exactly. Most of the franchise fees, they're not new, it's something that was paid prior to incorporation. The amounts may change, but franchise fees exist both at the county level and at the municipal level.
I think what was interesting for me to learn is that the Georgia power fee, for instance, you all have already been paying 1.9% on your power bill, which is a $1.90 per $100 bill, and that as we become a city, Georgia power imposes another 1.9%. So you could in fact see this fee go from $1.90 to 3.80. In fact, doubling. So if you hear people talking about doubling the fees, this is probably what you're talking about, but it's generally going from about a $2 fee to, or 1.9 to a 3.8 fee. Is that correct? In my mind, the good news is that whereas before, this 1.9% went to other cities. For some reason, the counties don't get to receive franchise fees, so it just goes to cities. And the good news, what I see as good news, is that the city will now get this full 3.8% fee coming back to the city for our benefit, to help both for the use within our city and even, you know, keep our taxes as low as possible.
Correct, in that we weren't getting it in unincorporated, and you now get it as a city. The amount is actually more, the city will get 4%, for all the counties that were paying into it not getting anything, you get a portion of that as well, so.
Oh, we knew that.
I believe the franchise agreement was 4% of revenues, if I'm not mistaken.
Comes, all that comes to the city now.
That's correct.
So it's not just the 4% out of our population, it's all people who, in unincorporated areas?
The base that you're getting your 4% on is the revenue that's generated in this area. But even though the rate payers pay less than 4% in this area, the city will get 4%. So some of the funds that are being paid by unincorporated rate payers helps make up that difference between the 4% and what the rate payers here in Brookhaven pay. So you'll get, the city will get more in return than what the utility payers are putting into.
So not a bad deal. As I understand it, this was one of the reasons that there was discussion earlier this year of DeKalb County wanting to incorporate to become a city, because one of the advantages was that they could then start collecting franchise fees, which they don't receive now.
That was one of the reasons I stated, correct.
And for the city of Brookhaven, we're estimating how many millions in franchise fees?
Probably close to two. It should be around $2 million per year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Pike?
Just the clarification on our next, so this will be the first adopted budget, but we will go through this how many more times and at what dates?
Typically, you'll do it anytime there's something major. For example, the startup of the police department, you'll want to do a budget amendment for that, in the event that you relocate City Hall, something significant in that respect. Or when you have enough small things accumulated that it, just for good housekeeping, it's time to do a budget amendment. I would foresee three, maybe four more times this year, you'll do a budget amendment. Some places amend the budget every time they have something that affects the budget. They'll have an agenda item, approve Resolution 1, 2, 3, and amend the budget accordingly. I find that a little bit labor-intensive, but it's, you know, it does go to that extreme as well. But I would say three to four major events, and then depending on the direction that you give staff, there may be more.
And the expected date to know the village rate of DeKalb County and Hostag County?
June.
June. So the city would then probably look to set the village rate in July?
You'll likely set it in June and remit that information over to the county so that they can get their bills printed and mailed out.
So, all right. I just want to comment, this budget is a document that required a lot of work, and we took a lot of extra time with it, because we wanted to make sure that we squeezed every penny out of every orifice that we could find in this budget. And I appreciate the work that you did on this, Chris, and Marie, and the entire staff, and all the vendors as well, to make sure that we are lean and mean, this is a fiscally conservative budget. Like you said, we have, before we can really set our mileage rate and we know what our revenue's going to be, we have to wait to get information from the county this summer. At that time, we can work at getting our mileage rate down below our cap, but nobody's trying to change the cap that we have in our charter. We have a 3.35 mil mileage rate cap. And that figure represented, for most people, when we passed out the legislature on the charter, and when it was spoken about during the majority of the referendum, people either paying in the county or paying in DeKalb County, or slightly less, even with franchise fees. What we're dealing with now, what many of you have received, robocalls, anonymous robocalls, and anonymous postcards claiming we were doing all sorts of bad things. DeKalb County, in July, just before the referendum, DeKalb County shifted money out of the police services line item that cities depend on to provide police services, which the county depends on to provide police services. So the time when the county was, people were recognizing the county was being sort of short-staffed in the police department, the county took money out of the police reserve and put it in the general fund, taking that money away from the police budget, putting it in the general fund. You have in your chairs some questions and answers about the budget, and they also have attached to that a letter from our state legislator, Mike Jacob, which he sent to the attorney general last week, because when that happened, the cities all across DeKalb County unanimously protested that move, and were shocked and surprised because they weren't properly notified. So this is an issue that is going to be ongoing, and we hope that it gets resolved this summer. But we're not going to be setting our rates, and we're not going to know our digest is until this summer. So some of the hundreds of calls that we've received in the last 24 hours are based on some assumptions that were put out in the flyer and put out in robocalls that weren't necessarily true. So I apologize that many people have received that and were confused by it, but we're moving forward, this city is going to be on sound financial footing. We are going to be able to provide, over the next two to three years, lower costs with better services in City Brookhaven. We all stick to that goal, we all believe in it, and we know it can work, so with your help and support, we'll be able to do that, with our great staff, we'll be able to do that. So I appreciate it, Chris, what you've done, and Marie, and what y'all will continue to do, and what we will do over the next three to four months to make sure that our budget is, that we live within our means, and we don't overspend, and we don't grow government unnecessarily. That's all I want, and it's nice to have a council that everybody believes the same on that. So anybody else have more comments about any of this?
I just want to add that I think many of you who have been, you know, studying your property tax bills for years know that there's a lot of moving parts to this property tax bill. We rely on, you know, DeKalb County tax assessors to tell us what the assessments are, and even today, it was in the news that housing prices are up, which is good news, until you get that assessment, and, you know, the assessment of your house goes up a little bit. There's also the tax, that's the tax digest that we'll get. Some of you get exemptions, some of you don't. There's the homestead exemption, which we actually raised by $10,000 in the charter, so that's going to give you an immediate little cost savings. There's, we rely on DeKalb County to set the host factor, which is the amount of the sale, the penny sales tax that the county gives towards our property tax reduction, and that number fluctuates every year, so that hasn't been set. So you can already see that these are factors that really we have no control over. The bulk of your money will still go to DeKalb County, and of course, we have nothing, you know, we're totally separate with the school system, and of course, that's half of your taxes right there. But the other half of about 20 mils goes to DeKalb County, a total of 20 mils, most of that goes to DeKalb County. Our portion of about 3 mils is what we are working so hard to control, and I too would reiterate that I think you will find that we are all united in wanting to deliver a very fiscally sound, responsible, lean, efficient budget that's going to provide the lowest taxes possible. So you'll know that we're dedicated to that.
Is our property tax assessment, or homestead exemption is out of freeze? What is, explain that?
The charter did set the tax assessments to be frozen. Their best I can tell, it's not sunsetted in any way, so this would apply for your city portion of the taxes. So if your 2012 assessment's at $200,000, that amount would remain as long as you remain at that home. Of course, if you do any major improvements or additions.
Or sell.
Or sell. You know, there's possibilities for it to change at that point. It can go down, but the assessment stops it from going higher.
Would this supersede the homestead freeze that was passed in the State House Legislature?
It does. In fact, I believe what passed at the state had a sunset provision, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was for three years or so. This does not have a sunset. Again, this isn't on your county or your school portion, but the city portion is what. So long-term, there's some savings as well.
One of the good things about, what I've noticed recently about incorporations, and something I didn't expect so soon, is when it comes to like the garbage service, where the county's talking about taking one, pick up their way, they're coming to ask us what our options, what we want as our options, whereas before, they didn't have to ask us. So now, they have an option of keeping our service at $265 or raising it to $305, depending on what you, the citizens, want. Any legislation, there's been legislation floated out about a one-cent sales tax in DeKalb County. We as a city, I've been called about, do I support that? So in fact, I know whether or not we want to impose a one-cent sales tax that the county's trying to push. So it might be enforced on the rest of the county, but we in Brookhaven have the right to opt out of that. So I think it's interesting that we have a little bit different dynamic here now. Anything else? All right. Chris, do you have anything else?
I have a motion.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
This may I amend, would consider approved Resolution 2012-10-01 for approval for fiscal year 2013 budget for the city of Brookhaven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion?
I just want to say that, sort of following what was being said about the 3.35 is placeholder mileage rate, there's a lot of moving parts that we've got to tie down between now and July, when we set the final mileage rate. More importantly, I think it's important to note that in this first year, because we were not a city last year, the budget describes $16 million worth of revenue that will be available to us next year that are not available to us this year. Even with that reduced revenue, we still have at this time almost a $5 million contingency in the budget that allows us the flexibility. We're keeping that in reserve to bring on the police department, we're keeping that in reserve to look at some improvements to road maintenance and those types of things. That obviously is money that we will choose to spend very wisely over the next course of the next few months, as the police chief comes on board and we begin to finalize the final cost of that very important service for the city of Brookhaven. And so we have a lean budget, we will have some additional revenue next year, but in the meantime, we're still able to maintain that contingency, and I believe it's going to be very important. Once we get all of the moving parts down, we're going to be able to set an effective load rate that I believe is going to be less than what is currently shown as the placeholder.
Right, and that's important, because as Jim said, having a contingency fund, when we don't use all the money in the contingency fund, we can dedicate some of that to either reserve for the next year or for tax relief, and to roll back the mileage rate. So that's what, that's why our contingency fund is just that, it gives us flexibility this summer when we know what the adjustments are. This budget is, we have to have a budget, we have no prior history, this is a budget we had to have, and it's, we appreciate the work on it, but it's going to change this summer, and the mileage rate is going to change. It's going to go down, that's what I'm working for. It's very, very important to all of us that we provide better services and lower costs, and part of that is reducing taxes whenever possible. So hopefully, with our contingency fund this summer, that's what we'll be doing. Thank you, Chris. Any other comments?
I would like to correct that number, please.
Yeah, I think it's.
Just change it to 2013-03-01.
I'll revise, I was thinking, this hasn't been on the table since 2012.
It was a cut-and-paste era from previous documents.
Thank you. I amend my motion for consideration approval of Resolution 2013-10-01. Is there a second to that?
2013-03 for March-01.
Sorry? One more time? I amend that motion for consideration approval of Resolution 2013-03-01.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I think we got that. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Any more discussion?
I would just ask, as you can see, we're trying to tread cautiously and carefully, and just, I ask for your patience, you may not see as many roads paved or heavy infrastructure improvements that you, we'd all like to see, but those are expensive, and we're just trying to make sure we've got the money and only spend what we have and as prudently as possible.
Thank you.
As the representative for District 4. As a representative for District 4, part of my platform was not to raise taxes, and I think that's pretty much synonymous with what's at this table. And if you give me a fly on the wall, we have our meetings, I'm telling you what, we are true to that promise. We're 99 days old today, it's dollar store time. We're not going to be spending excessive amounts of money. We know that we don't have the full budget to work with this year, and we will next year. We know we have priorities that have to be addressed, especially our police force coming up. We are very cognizant of this. We are really micromanaging this, and it's a shame some of the information's being put out there is really just because of lack of knowledge of what the truth is. But to reiterate one more time, and Chris has said it, it's been mentioned up at the stage, we will be revisiting this budget again, I believe in June, and we will revisit it again before the end of the year for year 2014, so by no means are we passing a final budget here.
All right. Any other comments? All right. All in favor of adopting the resolution, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a clerk, please enter the minutes, this resolution has passed. Thank you, Chris. All right, number two. Bill?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, this is a consideration approval of ordinance to adopt, I believe, Chapter 9 Municipal Court of the City of Brookhaven. This is an ordinance that makes it a violation to fail to appear pursuant to summons in municipal court. This is second rate, passed as a one-rate ordinance, and this is second rate of the ordinance.
All right. Any more?
I move. Yes. I'm sorry. I move to approve ordinance 02-013-03-03, an ordinance to adopt provisions in Chapter 9 Municipal Court of the Code of the City of Brookhaven, adding section 9-7, making it a violation for failure to appear pursuant to summons in municipal court.
I second.
Any discussion?
Let me just have a question, did we not have, when we brought over the initial curve from DeKalb County, was there not any provision for failure to appear? Or is this, was that just done?
This is, this is one that we're going to use in terms of failure to appear for warrant, rather than have a pinch warrant process. And it just creates, it creates a new violation. It substantially simplifies how you try to bring people in the process.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a clerk, please enter the minutes, this is the ordinance has passed. Number three. Bill?
This is a consideration ordinance, Chapter 2 by adding section 2.67 Audit Committee, this is second rate.
Motion?
Would you like me to repeat that? This is a consideration approval of ordinance 2013-03-05, amending Chapter 2 by adding section 2.67 Audit Committee, this is second rate.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance 2013-03-05, amending Chapter 2 by adding section 2.67 Audit Committee.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a clerk, please enter the minutes, this has passed. We tabled number four and number five.
Mayor and Council, this is a consideration approval of ordinance 20-13-03-09, granting to Atlanta Gas Light Company, a Georgia corporation here after the designation. I'm sorry, I have to look down and read it. This is a consideration approval of an ordinance, 2013-03-09, granting to Atlanta Gas Light Company, a Georgia corporation here and after designated as company with successors in a sign, the right and franchise to use and occupy. right and franchise to use and occupy streets, avenues, roads, places of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia. This is second read.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I say move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a clerk, please enter in minutes that this motion, this ordinance is passed. All due business. Bill?
Mayor Council, this is consideration approval ordinance 2013-03-1, declaring a need for the creation of a development authority to function in the city of Brookhaven, Georgia pursuant to the provisions of the Constitution of the State of Georgia, the Development Authorities Law, LCGA, Section 36, 62, 1, et cetera.
Is there any-
This would be a first read.
Is there, is this a motion on the floor?
This is first read. We can't do one reads if we pass our 90 days.
All right, Sam, number two? Did you go number two?
Mayor Council, this is consideration approval ordinance 2013-03-11, amending Chapter 7 Buildings and Building Regulations. This is a first read.
All right. Numbers three and four have been tabled. We have all three a new amendment. Is there a motion?
Just may I move that we impose a moratorium on new projects in the LCI overlay area so that the city can evaluate. A 60-day moratorium with an additional 30 days to allow us time to publish that public notice of the changes, but that's the motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Mayor Council, if I can make a presentation so we can have a record on your reasoning behind that.
Sure.
The resolution states, and I'm going to just read it into the record if I may, the General Assembly passed House Bill 636, which required referendum to create the city of Brookhaven in DeKalb County, Georgia, and whereas the referendum was conducted on March 29, 2012, electric vote, create the city of Brookhaven. Whereas House Bill 636 incorporating, the city of Brookhaven creates a city council mayor to assume responsibility for municipal governance in the city of Brookhaven beginning December 17, 2012. Whereas under provisions of House Bill 635, the power to control licensing, permitting, inspection, zoning, land use variance, and other statutory uses of property within the corporate limits of the city of Brookhaven belongs to the city council and the mayor. Whereas the city lawfully assumed planning and zoning responsibilities from DeKalb County on January 17, 2013. And whereas to ensure responsible governance over zoning, land use, variance, and other statutory controls on the uses of property within the boundaries of Brookhaven Peachtree Overlay District within the city of Brookhaven, a moratorium is necessary to suspend the city's acceptance, review, and processing of applications for official zoning map amendments, comprehensive land use plan amendments, variances, administrative variances, special exceptions, special land use permits, or any and all other permits or licenses dependent upon and related to zoning of land beginning March 27, 2013, at 12:01 a.m. and ending at midnight on June 25, 2013. The property located within Brookhaven Peachtree Overlay District within the municipal boundaries of the city of Brookhaven as specifically described in Brookhaven Code, section 27-728.15, read. And whereas the existing businesses of individuals operating within Brookhaven Overlay District within the city of Brookhaven have invalid county licenses, a permit should be allowed to continue to operate during the moratorium. And whereas if you incorporate the findings and statements that I previously stated as part of your moratorium, that would be what we'd ask you to do in setting a moratorium as to the licensing. That is, the reasoning behind this, Mayor Council, is that there is a need for the new community development director and to go forward and make some changes into this overlay district that we brought in in toto from, yes.
Does Calvin Madison wish to include what was just read in his motion?
Yes. And further, if I could further point out that, so for them to make the record, that is required for, while we do this study, that we have the opportunity to effect the wishes and desires of the mayor and council, and not just take in toto what DeKalb County had previously done, and to effectuate the desires of council that you are now in place to do. We need to have, we do have a moratorium to give you that opportunity, because we have to act under the Zoning Procedures Act. There are a number of things that have to happen, including there'll have to be notices and public hearings, and the desire is to operate under the auspices of the city council and the mayor's direction rather than the county's previous statutory scheme.
Thank you. So, is there a second to make some motion?
Yes, I second it.
Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to clarify that there, the overlaying as, as the first draft of the ordinances was somewhat ambiguous and has caused confusion in the development community. The purpose of this moratorium is to clean up the wording of the overlay so that we have clear understanding to the development community and within the citizens of what the intent of the overlay is. That's a wingling for both parties, so that's the purpose of it. And hopefully, we'll get through it as quickly as possible. If we can get through the moratorium and finally resolve this sooner, I hope that we would be able to lift one to moratorium earlier. So, I don't mean legal requirements.
And along those lines, I'd like the direct staff to come back to us at our next meeting and let us know that if we can in fact reduce it to a 30-30 moratorium possibly, and also want to make sure that we understand that it is opening the LCI ordinance for technical changes and also for changes of clarification, is not opening it up for conceptual changes or things that really matter as far as what the overlay is standing for. We found now that we're beginning to use it, that there are some things that need to be addressed to make the code a little bit clearer for both the user and for staff, and that's the reason for this moratorium is to address those items with more technical nature and let us prove that without having the confusion of plans coming in during the time that we're under review.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Just one quick comment, really quick.
Very interesting.
Yeah. A lot of this has come about from comments that we've picked, we've heard from you folks, in particular, situations like number of cars in the LCI overlay in Dresden. So, we're listening to what you're saying. We know that it needs to be addressed and updated, so if you have further input that you'd like us to consider, by no means.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Not a clerk, please enter in minutes that the adoption, that the motion has been passed. Okay? We've tabled three and four. Other business? Yes?
I know that the council did move to table the intergovernmental agreement regarding the solid waste management, but Mr. Ted Reinhart is here to address the council and make comment regarding sanitation services in the county and the city.
Ted, you can do a two-minute, that'd be great.
I'm used to having to do that. I apologize for being late. I went up to your city hall without realizing you were there. I re-experienced somebody in traffic. And I appreciate your indulgence. I thought I'd just give you a brief update of where we are for your background, and then we can have some further dialogue at your next meeting on your feedback. As you know, we are proud of our solid waste services. We are very fortunate to have a landfill that has 70 years of life plus remaining. We have three well places, transfer stations north central and east, that allows us to run a very efficient offloading operation from our collection vehicles to the long haul trailers from landfill. We have, I think you'd find, a very dedicated solid waste workforce. Even though they're not among our better paid employees, they hit it hard. And for those reasons, I think it gives us some cost advantages and an economy of scale to provide that service, and what I think is a very customer-friendly service. We still pick up trash twice a week, yard waste once a week, and most recently, we offer the subscription-based curbside recycling, which then helps us preserve that landfill space even farther in the future. But, like most organizations, since we haven't raised the fees since 2006, since that time, cost of diesel fuel is up significantly. These garbage trucks only get two to three miles to a gallon. The cost of equipment is up. Most of these trucks are over $200,000. And so, at this point, we're at a juncture where we're beginning to lose money in that fund, that enterprise fund. And so, before our Board of Commissioners and the CEOs, the very difficult decision of do they want to raise the rates to 305 from the current 265, or do they want to go to once a week solid waste pickup? And of course, we continue yard waste and recycling as usual. The thing I'm stressing in this decision for everyone from background is we would not alter the convenience of our program. So, we would still pick up everything we currently pick up. And I think the beauty of our system is just about anything you can put at the curb that the drivers can lift safely, they will take. And so, what I'm trying to encourage people to think is, is away that difficult decision, do I raise rates and leave the twice a week pickup, or do I keep rates down and consolidate to once a week pickup, save diesel fuel, be a little more environmentally friendly, et cetera? Is that we would not alter what we pick up. It just means we'd be coming one day instead of twice, and people would have to containerize accordingly, but it would still be very, very customer-friendly. So, that's in a nutshell where we are. I appreciate your indulgence, and we'll look forward to more dialogue as our board wrestles with the same issue toward which direction we're going as a community.
Thank you very much, Ted.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ted.
All right. Public comment section. Do we have any more? Matt a clerk? Do you have any more comments?
I do not have any that have been turned in.
Okay. All right. Going once. Everybody wants to make a comment on the form, going twice. All right, the public comment section is closed. Now, it's time for Megan Matucci. It's my comment time. I wanted to announce that also, I neglected to mention that Megan Matucci is our new communications director. Stand up, Megan, please.
Matucci.
Matucci. She's a law student at John Marshall Law School, where I went to school in. And she is doing a great job. She's a great writer. She's prompt, and she's going to be, from this point forward, folks, she'll be getting a lot more frequent and thorough communication from the city. You've got to bear with us, in this first few months, it's been kind of difficult to communicate effectively. But please, here's one thing that I want to stress to everybody. Thank you, Megan. A little round of applause for Megan. Yet another female in charge of Brookhaven. I would stress to you, please sign for our mailing list, and also, please, if you have a homeowners association or civic organization in your community, please ask them to add the city of Brookhaven's email news blast we send out hopefully once a week to your listserv or to your database so that we can, when we send an email, your residents get an email. And that way, we can communicate a lot better, and you can be informed of what's going on, what the city's doing, and what, you can communicate back and forth with us a little bit better. So, I just encourage everybody to do that. Also, I have one more announcement. This is a personal point of privilege here. I recently, I began, I did judo as a child, which is a great sport. It's sort of like wrestling, very intensive exercise. I decided that I want to get my kids involved in judo, and there's a, looked online, I found a judo dojo off Cheshire Bridge Road just outside the city limits of Brookhaven. There's no, there's not a judo dojo in the city of Brookhaven, so we need to talk about maybe getting one here. But I wanted to go take my kids to visit and see if they wanted to be involved, and then I recognized a gentleman who, when I was a child or a teenager, he was involved in the dojo where I went before, and before I knew it, he had a gi on me, and I was out doing judo again, and sweating and breathing hard.
Do we have a picture?
There's a mental picture, I'm sure there's not, very. So, I've been going and getting some good exercise, and it's a great program for children. Judo's a great sport. It teaches discipline, balance, and it helps you in every sport for the rest of your life. So, I just want to recognize, since they shot up here, he's here, and he has some literature. If anybody, any of you parents have anything that you want to sign your kids up for, it's not far away from the city of Brookhaven, it's just down Cheshire Bridge Road, right off of Union Highway, he's here available with some information. And if you want to say a couple of words, since they shot, maybe 30 seconds, right here at the microphone?
Very difficult for a fellow lawyer to say a couple of words, but I'm a criminal defense lawyer, and I've been in judo for over 50 years. As Mac says, he came back and found us, we have a school that's a Cheshire region people on, we have a, one of the biggest kid schools in Georgia, and that's where we took the trophy and went in Southeast championship. So, anybody interested in judo, it's an Olympic sport. We have a young lady who came to us and said we'd like to come teach, and she is from Cuba, and she's been in four Olympics, has three Olympic medals, and she is a soon-to-be US citizen. And so, she's 37, and she has four children in judo, so. Any questions anybody has for me, I'll stay for a few minutes. Judo is really a good sport. It's like baseball. It's like soccer. Anything you want to get your children into, keep them occupied so they don't get in trouble. I have six children, and yet, my six children have not earned that opportunity to be a police officer, which is good. I think they have one too. So, I keep my children busy, and this is like Mac said, it's a great thing for children to come do. If it's a discipline, and it's a martial art, it's a lot of fun to do. If anybody has any questions or anything, I'll stay around and pull that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. And there's no punching or kicking in judo, so your kids won't come home and start kicking and punching, which was happened a lot with karate out there. So, thank you very much. All right. Anything else? Anybody have any comments before we adjourn here? I encourage all of you to stick around once we adjourn this meeting. Of course, there's another meeting about schools to start for that. All right? Is there a motion? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned, or please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll adjourn. Stick around, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back.